Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Dear Hail to Father be with us this evening as we do the business for the city and the community and the good and the welfare. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Item C, approval of the agenda?
For a motion?
I make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, so it's unanimous.
Item D, citizens' comments? At this point we would allow citizens' comments for anyone who is residing or not residing within the city. They'd have to state their full name and their address, and are given three minutes.
Is it your turn? It's my turn. I've never been to one of these. Am I supposed to come up here? Okay. I'm Ashley Willard. I live at 213 North Oak over here. The reason I'm here is I got the letter about rezoning the property where the First Baptist Church is. Can anybody answer me if that means you're going to be demolishing the First Baptist Church? Does anybody know?
I don't think that's been decided, has it?
We can discuss that further in depth during the actual agenda for that item, but if you're willing, Mr. Chair, you can. Jordan Ungles, who's representing that agenda item, is here. If you want to direct any questions at him during this time, we do. Typically, we don't answer questions during citizens' comments, but if you want to allow, we can afford.
Sorry. I didn't know that.
Well, if it's going to come up in a few minutes anyway, then if you've got the patience to wait on us.
Sure, sure. Okay. Well, my biggest problem is I don't care how it's rezoned. I just don't want to see it torn down. I live right across the street from it. It's about 100 years old. It's older than any of us.
Be careful with that.
Maybe not you. My suggestion was, why doesn't the buyer purchase the empty lot that's sitting right next to it that's been empty for 40 years or more? And I don't know if that's maybe because they don't want to dig a new sewer line or something like that. So maybe Goddard could incentivize somebody to buy the empty lot by offering to foot the cost of the new utilities or just something to that effect. And it seems like if we're, you know, so interested in spending money on building the new parks and bike paths, which are great, and me and my son love those, we also ought to be interested in preserving the old, pretty parts of Goddard that founded Goddard to start with. So, that is all.
Thank you very much.
Item E, approval of the minutes. And at this point, I would say, just to, if you wish to approve it, prove it tentatively based upon the revision for the first paragraph.
Yes. Motion to approve the minutes. I'd like a motion with the correction. I'll say it. Corrections to catch up. I wasn't here, so I didn't chair, I didn't open the meeting or lead the pledge.
That's a clear copy and paste error.
All in favor with those revisions?
Aye.
I will also vote for them.
Okay. Item F, Board of Zoning Appeals. This is item F1, the Baptist Church rezoning. Quick background. On October 8th, 2020, Mr. Jordan Ungles and Mr. James Verona submitted a rezoning application for the Baptist Church located at 124 West Second Avenue. Mr. Verona, Mr. Ungles are requesting the rezoning of the Baptist Church property for the purpose of using annex property located on the same lot for offices. The lot is currently zoned R1, single-family detached. The requested zoning will be a C1 central business district. C1 zoning allows for these permitted uses, and the one that he wants to use would be professional offices and financial institutions, but just professional offices. So I went ahead and put that in green to show you that it does confirm, conform with the land use allowed. This is the current zoning map, and if you can see right here, the red is the central business district from Santa Fe to Third. The star represents that property. These lots over here are currently zoned C1 that go with that purchase of the property. And this one right here has the annex on it and the church right next to it. They're on the same lot, so they're under the same tax ID. Financially, small fee associated with publication, and legally is approved as the form. It is recommended that the Planning Commission approve the rezoning request for the Baptist Church lot, parcel identification number 00254294. And at this point, I would invite Mr. Jordan Ungles, who represents himself and his partner Joey Verona to speak. And if you do have any questions, please direct it his way.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for having me. Appreciate your time. Like you mentioned, I'm Jordan Ungles. I am going to be speaking for myself and my partner, Mr. James Joey Verona, who's obviously the owner of the chiropractic clinic on Main there as well. So really, our whole goal and kind of my goal, and so I'm the gentleman who bought the old interlocal day school over there and remodeled it, converted it, and was able to bring in eight new businesses into Goddard. Goddard has been fantastic to myself and my businesses, and it's, all the folks that we've brought into that building over there have been thrilled with the city so far. And really, that's what we'd like to do over there with that annex. We'd like to go in, we'd like to, you know, paint it up, dress it up, lipstick it a little bit, polish it a little bit, and then convert it into offices so that we can bring more businesses into Goddard. I think the more businesses and the more, you know, focus that we can kind of put back on Main Street, in my opinion, I think the better. So that's really where our focus has been. Obviously, Mr. Verona's office is right here as well, you know. So we want kind of the Main Street there to be, to be a focus, right? To be something that people want to come to, that they want to be interested in, that they, that we want to have foot traffic down. So that's kind of our whole goal with trying to develop that annex and to get it a vital, viable part of kind of the Main Street. Any questions on that front?
Yeah. Could you answer her concerns about the church building?
Right now, we've just gotten back all of our inspection reports, and as you can imagine, something like this, there's a lot that goes into it. And at the moment, there's some significant issues that would have to be taken care of. And to be honest with you, we have not sat down and even started to sort that out in regards to what the plan is for that. Our whole plan for kind of this entire purchase was the annex building. We do not have a game plan as for that yet. Really, our whole goal is, and from a financial standpoint, we've got to get that annex building up and running and get businesses in there and get it filled before we can really move on doing anything else.
Does that satisfy your point?
It does. I just don't want to see anything happen to the church building. I don't care about the educational, the annex building.
And as per the, you know, you had mentioned the open lot, well, that, we've purchased that whole, I guess we haven't closed, but we're in the process of buying that whole strip there, I guess is what you'd call it.
How many businesses did you plan on putting in that annex?
Once again, I mean, that's somewhat of a moving target. Depending on how we finally decide that we want to kind of piece it all together, you're looking anywhere between eight to 10. That could be somewhat, you know, if one business comes in and they say, hey, we want one whole side, well, then obviously that's going to cut down on the amount that we can bring in, but obviously that's going to be bringing in more people into, you know, the downtown area. But the goal right now is somewhere between eight to 10.
Parking?
That's also something that we don't have quite squared away yet. To be frank, the, if we can't get it rezoned, it's not as appealing, and I don't know that we would even continue to move on it. Parking, all of those things are discussions that, that obviously it's going to be something that we have to continue to discuss because we don't even know if it's a viable option for us yet at this point.
So you don't have plans for the vacant lot to the east of it?
We plan on using the vacant lot to the east of it at some point. We do not have a set game plan on that yet. Once again, it's all predicated on whether we can get the annex building rezoned so that, so that we can create cash flow to be able to do, to develop that other ends. And so that's really the main part of what we're trying to accomplish at the moment.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, but I like, I do like, you know, the idea of bringing businesses back to downtown, back to Main Street.
Absolutely. And I, you know, that's something that, you know, just with, with my businesses and with the first building, you know, that I bought here in town, you know, hard to stick a gem. I own came to strength and performance as well. Hard to stick a gem right on Main Street, but it's definitely something that I've, ever since I got into town, I, there's, there's got to be an opportunity there. We've got to figure out how to get it done. And so when this opportunity came up, obviously, I was excited about it.
Do you know anything about the lot to the east, that empty lot? Who owns that?
I'm trying to direct the church lot. I'm trying to...
I mean, it's kind of off-subject, but the, the empty lot next to it, do you know anything about it?
So the empty lot to the east is, well, I keep looking over here like there's going to be something there, but. So that, that is, right, that is one, the Baptist Church owns that entire line. So what we would be purchasing would be the box you see the star in and the one, the exact same size of that in the red on the other side.
Oh, okay. It's, well, and ours, the...
There's an alley there.
Before that, if you go back one more, no, the site plan, the aerial? Oh, it's not on the presentation. It's just for you guys. Oh, okay. On the aerial, it's just got a box drawn around that. It's 124 West Second Avenue. Right. That's the rezoning. The thing is, the other one's already zoned. They're only requesting this to be rezoned.
Right.
These are actually, there's actually two lots right here, and I can actually, if you wanted to pull it up on the aerial map, but there's two lots right here that are currently central business district. It's included in the purchase of this whole property right here. So they're all on the same purchase. These are already central business district. He just wants to rezone that. Okay. But you own it, the one to the east?
Yes. If this purchase goes through, if we can get it rezoned, then yes, we would own.
I mean, my only thinking is, well, there's your parking.
Potentially. Once again, I mean, I, there's, I think there's potentially options if we can get to that point.
Yeah, that's, that's prime land to build on, too.
Absolutely. I don't know that, I don't know that parking necessarily bring a whole lot of value to that main strip there on.
So I have, I have one more question. So then are you considering possibly demolishing the church to use that spot for parking?
Honestly, right now, we've, we've got no plans for the church.
Okay.
It's, as far as parking goes, we haven't given it much thought at all. Once again, because if we can't get it rezoned, then it, then it doesn't make sense and it doesn't work. And so parking isn't an issue if it, if we're not going to be able to use it for what we need it to be used for anyway.
I think that answers most of our questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
I think we are. I'd like to hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request for the Baptist Church lot, parcel identification number 00254294.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye also.
Thank you very much. Jordan, if you want to, you can stay for the rest, or you're free to go. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Old business, there is none. New business, there is none. Moving on to I, staff report. So the detached garage square foot consideration, I went ahead and got this moving forward, so I published it in the paper as required. It will have to, if it's considered and approved by the Planning Commission, if they choose to move forward on it, it will have to also go before the governing body for approval. And basically, this is the consideration of increasing the detached garage square footage allowable that's on a residential lot from 720 to 1440. The discussion went through the economic underpinnings of the revision. I did speak with Jack Mannion, City County Residential Land Analyst, and asked him about the theory behind it, about allowing a detached garage. If we increase the availability for people to build, does that actually improve the value of the lot? He said yes and no. He said predominantly yes, just because in Kansas, more people want garages, and you see that. It increases the sellability of the property if it has a detached garage, but not everybody does, because obviously a single mom of five kids doesn't necessarily want a detached garage. But he said, for the most part, you see, and he'd have to do more analysis to make that determination, but you do see houses with detached garages selling typically more if they do have it, and that value increases. So people can ask for more because they have a detached garage, and people are willing to pay that extra amount for that detached garage that they typically. It led to a conversation about what is actually outside of the property in terms of would it improve the value of the property, not necessarily just the principal or accessory. And he said that the number one thing he's seen unequivocally that improves property value would be a pond. So obviously, that would require quite a bit of square feet and acreage to actually allow for ponds, but it's just something for personal note. But Brahms has had the building permit approved by MABCD, and the building inspection car is ready for pickup. The project is valued at 100, oh, 800,000 for the building in the city, and I'll be collecting 4,795 for the permit and 5,000 for the sewer and water taps. And they don't need to have their stormwater protection plan approved by Kansas Department of Health and Environment. This is sort of an informal Gantt chart that I put together that just kind of outlines what the GC, the general contractor, said would kind of be their timeline. So silt fence and building permit, obviously, are going to have to be done in November. They want to start breaking ground in December for excavation, and then sometime around the end of December, beginning of January, sewer and water will be going in, then concrete and paving, and then building construction will begin sometime in February, and then they hope to be done before the end of June. They said, they virtually guaranteed it'll be done by the end of June. They said if they were in July, that there's some abnormality, that they're running late. So July would be...
Like 2020.
Yeah. But according to them, they were able to get it done. A similar size Brahms in Texas, they didn't run into any problems there, and a similar sized one in Oklahoma, they didn't run into any problems there. So hopefully, weather permitting, we'll be able to see this timeline, and Brahms will be open before the end of June. So. And in 227 North Cedar Street, the building permit for 227 North Cedar Street has been pulled, and the BMP has been put in place. I went ahead and had the subcontractor who was putting the BMP wrap that lot on all three sides except for the alley to take into accommodation the gentleman to the south, so that if there's any construction, it won't flow underneath the fence onto his property. And I left it open because obviously the alley slopes into the lot, so there's no concern of water backing up onto the alley, and that will encourage the... no concern of water backing up onto the alley, and that will encourage development to happen from driving them onto the alley and onto the lot, and hopefully we can get that going so it doesn't beat up Second Street as bad. Um, the building permit is valued at $200,000 and with taps, we're collecting 4592. I just wanted to show you with the star, this is the location of 227. Um, you can see that in terms of valuation, it's the highest in that block on this area and all surrounding blocks. This lot is vacant, that one is vacant, but it, and it significantly improves the tax ability of that property, which is, which is what we want to see for old Goddard. That's, conversation's been coming up again and again. Um, City Council member Larry Zimmerman mentioned that about improving our Main Street and improving downtown Goddard. Uh, Mr. Jordan Uncle spoke about that and conversations with planning commissioners, um, we've, we've had that come up multiple times about how we can improve, uh, basically west of north of Goddard Road and north of Santa Fe and south of 54, that particular area. At this point, we'll move on to item J, planning commissioner comments.
What's a BMP?
Best management practice is it has to do with s- with silt runoff when you start exonerating.
I never heard it called that either.
It's part of our municipal separate stormwater system that we have to have in place since our proximity of Wichita, we kind of are co-opted in that way, but we have to have BMPs in place to try to prevent silt from running off into the streets and into the storms.
Well, I, I know what it is, I just never heard it called.
Yeah.
No, I guarantee you, Mr. Carlisle will be watching that since his property's next door.
That's right, that's why I had him put the silt fence on all three sides and include that, that sound.
He's the utility contractor.
Uh, just one quick question as far as the detached garage square foot is a consideration. That, that 1440 square foot, it still depends upon the lot size?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, lot coverage, so if they presented a four, let's say they, it was up to 1400, let's say, and so it's well below the 1440, you know, so we could move forward on it, but then if we did our calculation and said, oh, you don't, you're, you've exceeded your lot coverage, then we wouldn't bring it before the planning commissioner, just can't, couldn't accept it. I wouldn't have been able to accept it either.
You're just giving the maximum size up to that, I mean, if this one.
That's right, so if they, if they wanted, if they were doing 1440 and it, and it exceeded the lot coverage, I would have to talk to them in the office and say, listen, you've exceeded lot coverage percentage for an R1, you have to downsize until you are below 35% of the lot coverage. And the way our lot coverage is, is calculated, it's principal and accessory over total lot area. So we don't take into consideration driveways, impervious surface, as some other cities do, especially on the east and west coast, they take into account impervious surface which requires a survey. We don't do that, we just do principal and accessory over total lot coverage, over total lot square footage, so. But yeah, that would, a violation of the bulk regulations, we wouldn't have accepted.
I guess along those lines, is that half big enough? 1440?
Pretty good size.
Pretty good garage.
Yeah.
Thirty by forty. That's what I'm saying, is it big enough? Thirty by forty is, well, uh.
Without getting into.
Yeah.
The round number, twenty-four, it's twenty-four by thirty, or something like that, or.
I basically, we just doubled the 720 that I usually see on an attached garage. Seems that's pretty standard for a lot of attached garages and so. The last ones that we approved were over 2000, 2000 around that, so.
That's perfect. And a little extra room.
So what's the. We have the detached garages that, we're trying to control how much of that is used as opposed to just doing like roof, roof area on the property and the coverage?
The coverage is basically, is simply if you're looking, the way it's described in the subdivision regulations is if you're looking down and you see, and it doesn't include the eaves, but if you're looking down and you see a building, a house, and then you see an accessory, like a detached garage, that combined creates the numerator, the denominator's going to be the complete.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering if we just don't let that determine what you can.
Oh, I see.
We're trying to apply use to.
Yeah, I would just have to.
An extra building.
So you're saying if.
Rather than building a bedroom with like, you know, a mother-in-law building, which would be dependent completely on roof cover, the roof area.
Yeah, we would have to consider changing the bulk regulations to either increase or decrease it if we wanted to control that. We just see a lot of detached garages going in and the assumption is that it's increasing value on the property, which increases property taxes for the city.
Okay.
Um, the zoning currently does allow, in single family and in our subdivision regulations, it allows for the building of a granny flat. You can build a granny flat currently if you have enough space and you can meet the setbacks. Um, it's just whether or not.
There's just not a restriction on square footage of those.
No, there isn't, no.
And that all comes down to, that'd be all roof area.
All roof area, that's right.
But we're, we're specifically saying if it's a garage.
Detached, yes.
Uses a garage.
That's right.
And 720 is the number.
That's right.
Level space, is that what, I mean, really what we're saying?
It's just kind of odd that, you know, we're using roof.
I think he's making a.
It's somewhat arbitrary.
If you have three acres, you ought to build a bit, build a big garage as big as you want.
As long as you don't.
Yeah.
I mean.
As long as you don't exceed that roof area.
I think it's the, since we've adopted, since we've been an incorporated municipality since like 1910, the idea is that the more urban we get, the lots get smaller. And so then you, you definitely want the lot coverage in there because you're saying that there's got to be some setback requirements for the residents who, when they have a quarter acre lots, you know, you want to have a front yard setback and everything else, and so within that setbacks, that billable envelope, you're still going to have a detached garage on there and then you're going to have a lot coverage calculation on top of it. Um, but it does become somewhat arbitrary in that, in that regard.
Well, you have to, you just can just put a livable space in and then it'd be bigger garage than you want.
That's right. Then you just get to the max on the roof area. I mean, really.
That's not the normal norm.
You've got a roof. But that's why I wondered if we're, if we're not just playing games with use.
Like, eventually inside the city, we might run into people that were challenging it. I don't know, you, people in Elkridge want to look next to a garage that's twice as big as your house.
There's one of them here.
I just meant.
That's true.
I don't think we'll allow mother-in-law apartments.
Long problem is either.
Opinions vary. Uh, everything in the subdivision regulations is subject to review. I mean, if, if you felt that it was going in a negative direction, for example, of detached garages, that could, when it comes up in December, you could table it and we could move forward and produce in it or maybe considering lot coverage changes, everything's available for.
And the nice thing about.
Just, just curious.
The nice thing about the, the limitation is if it gets too big, we get to see it. Right? I mean, because they can ask for a bigger.
That's right, so detached garage, if it exceeds a 1440 and they're like, we want to do 2000, and it's on a half acre, so that the lot coverage is well below the 35%, that would be a conditional use and then you would see it.
At least we're at line four now. At least we have the chance to say, wait a minute.
Yeah, and I can see, I mean, a garage being somewhat in a pin, somebody's opinion, uglier than other things, you know, then you're right. It throws up a red flag so you get to go, oh, hold on, hold on, it's too many overhead doors.
Right, right.
You know.
I mean, how many is yours?
Eight hundred.
Yes.
And it's huge, I mean, it's three, it's three stalls.
Yes.
I can't imagine, I'd like to have more than that.
Two, two hundred.
Yeah, I just, man.
Yeah, it's interesting, I mean, they built the one at 301 First Avenue, they, I mean, that was the one that was a conditional use for that detached, and then the one in Elkridge got stalled out because of the HOA and they stopped it. And, but it's not that they denied it, they're just, it's under review now. And so the president, or whatever his title is for the HOA for Elkridge called me, and so we had a conversation, you know, about it and, and it was a good conversation. And we talked about, you know, the growth and taxes and is there a precedent for it already? And there is, and everything else that goes with it, lot coverage calculations. Um, but honestly, it seems like people want bigger garages in Kansas for RVs, boats, you know, trailers, everything else that comes with it. And, um, sometimes it's, it's beneficial in that way because then you don't see the RVs. I don't have to call people when they park the RV too long on the driveway. Um, that's, that's a consistent problem, or they park a boat too long on the street and the neighbor calls me and then I have to go call them and say, move your boat, it's been there too long.
Hold it four foot, please.
Yeah, yeah, and things of that nature. And so when you have a detached garage and it's allowable and people are willing to pay for it, assuming that it's improving the property tax at the time, it's also decluttering the street and driveway simultaneously, so.
I think that's good. I think the bigger issue in zoning is, you know, if the garage did get bigger and taller than shading somebody's backyard.
That'd be, that'd be interesting, yeah.
Shading their backyard to where they can't have a garden along the back side or something like that because they're getting, you know, no sun at some point in time of the day, and that's a bigger zoning issue than.
Right, right. Los Angeles has a shadow site plan.
Yes.
So I don't know if we were, at that point, we were going to start adopting a site plan, shadow lot coverage, but.
You know, it's, it, it piques on somebody more than saying there's a restricted size of 700.
That's true, that's true.
You, how far it is from the property lines and how tall it is, so that their backyard becomes unusable is a bigger zoning issue than just square footage.
That's true, I mean, if lots get smaller and garages get bigger, that would be a, that would be a situation where perhaps civil matters might.
Shadows of everybody else's RV. And that's really what, why we have zoning is to protect, I mean, somebody from.
Health, safety and welfare.
Yeah.
That's right.
Runoff would come first and that's where we got the roof area.
Mm-hmm.
And then secondly, that, the health and welfare, you know, the.
That's right.
Towering over somebody's backyard.
That's true, yeah.
And decreasing their property.
Welfare is very, is very broad, and it's been interpreted in a very broad sense, legally speaking, for about a hundred plus years. And so the whole idea of health, safety and welfare with zoning came about, especially when the Supreme Court ruled in favor of the city of Euclid in Ohio, uh, over Amber Realty in 1924, the Supreme Court ruled in favor of the city of Euclid for zoning, um, that predominantly was stating that health, safety and welfare with reasonable, you know, zoning regulations was perfectly legal. And that's kind of what led to the mass acceptance of Euclidian zoning across the nation. And that's where we are now, where, you know, every once in a while, we do want to consider our zoning map broadly speaking, is this health, safety and welfare, and also is it reflective of acceptable marketing practices and everything else that we want to consider for, for managing a city as it's growing, which we are growing exponentially fast. And so all these things are good questions and considerations for moving forward.
Well, I mean, does the height, is, the height would be, um, for the entire property.
There's a height restriction.
So, so the shop could be as tall as the house.
Yes.
A two-story house, and then you put a two-story shop in the back, which you could.
Technically, yes.
Would be worse than building a large, low-profile something, in my, I mean, in my opinion.
Yeah, potentially, yeah, because the accessory unit is usually reflective of the principal, so the setbacks that affect the principal affects the accessory as well. So as an example, if the access, if the principal house can be two stories, 20 feet, typically speaking, the accessory can also be 20 feet.
So, in that same thinking, in, in my mind, restricting the height on a detached structure would be better for the common good than restricting square footage, um, under that area allowed of the roof.
That'd kind of defeat the purpose of building a big garage in your backyard if you restricted the height, you ain't going to be able to get a trailer or.
Well, and that's where it throws up a red flag.
Yeah.
Because that is what would, that would affect somebody, the neighbor, na- more negative than you covering your lot with concrete.
Yeah.
You know, the runoff, runoff is, is, is a bitch, but once you get above that, you know, fence line or whatever, then you've, you've negatively impacted your neighbor. And I'm, I mean, I'm thinking about reasonably smaller lots.
Yeah.
That, that, that you have to look at that thing creep up over the fence and shade your backyard the entire afternoon and then your backyard doesn't dry out and you've got, you know, mold and fungus issues and all that stuff, which goes back to the health.
Health and safety.
Absolutely. So I think, I mean, I think having a height restriction that throws up a red flag to me is more important than, than having a red flag for anything over 720. You know, if, I, I don't know that you could throw that out, it's been in there long, so long that it's kind of like.
It's very, I mean, we can adopt a height restriction if the planning commission wants to move forward on it.
What are you thinking?
Well, you know, I want, I love, you know, I love outbuilding, so, you know, I want people to be able to build to the maximum roof area. But it, yeah, there's a negative impact when you get in height.
No, I understand, but what is your, what are you thinking? I mean, if you go less than 12 feet, you're kind of defeating the purpose.
Yeah.
Well, okay, I mean, maybe that's.
Also wise.
What does your, determine RV, does your, your average?
Need a 10.
Motor door? 10-foot door?
14.
14. So you could have, you could have your, your trust bearing it.
So you need 14-foot door?
Yeah.
14-foot door. You'd need 16-foot sidewalls for that.
You see what I mean?
Some new houses right now that they have 14-foot tall walls on the front.
They have those.
They're 12.
And I'm, I'm all about it, but I'm thinking in my mind, there's more of a negative impact for height in that situation than there is for air, area, floor area.
True.
And, and we could combine the two as, as each one being a red flag and then bring it before us and, and let us decide if, if there's going to be a negative impact or not.
Because you're, you're suggesting someone with a smaller lot could build a single car and still have the roof coverage, not be under the roof coverage, but they could be 20-foot and.
As high as the two-story house.
Right.
So the, so the ridge line is 25 feet or whatever it is, 30 feet, and I'm, you know, I'm the neighbor, and that's where, you know, zoning, I mean, that's where we're here to do, what we're doing is to keep, you know, peace and keep the health of the lots adjacent to the other ones. So when somebody requests something like that, you got to make sure that there's not going to be a negative impact on the four people around them or whatever.
Well, a lot of that depends on the direction it's built.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Under the law.
And, and that is why it should come before us and have us take a look at it.
Yes.
That's the solution to the whole.
But all, my, my point is, heights to me is, is more important than.
So then I'm back to my, I'm back to my question. Like, what is, what is your, your thought on heights with, you know, at the peak?
Seven-story house.
Twenty-five?
So you would have like, probably on a residential R1, R2, you would probably have 25, 30 feet is probably.
I'd have to go back and look, I can check.
The maximum height at the peak.
I haven't seen a lot of two-story houses in Goddard other than, I think in Hopper there's might be one or two, and in, I think there's.
Yeah, there's not a lot.
Fourth Street, that, I don't know if that's two, I'm sorry, I think it's two stories on Fourth Street.
Some of the walkouts are real popular in Kansas.
Some of the walkouts tend to be.
Yeah.
Twenty-five foot.
So it might be 25 foot.
25.
My house is 25-foot tall at the peak, but it's a bi-level. So as a two-story, you're going to get more.
Bi-levels, there's several of those in the seasons, that was a plan they had, was a, spoke of a plan.
So, I don't know. I mean, if you, then if you restricted the detached garage at a, you know, 20-foot or 15-foot to the ridge line, then at least there's some control of that, you know, and then somebody goes, well, I'm going to build taller than that 15-foot, then ding ding, fifteen-foot, then ding ding, and we get to make sure that it, the people on either side aren't negatively impacted. And then we, you know, it might be that, okay, well, you know, you've got to push that over ten feet to-
Or at least, at least it would be published, and they would have the opportunity to become express their concern.
Yes, exactly.
You know, I mean, if they don't show up, I guess they don't care.
Wouldn't that be something, when they bring it to you, even to pull the permit, you could look at it and say, ooh, this guy wants twenty-foot tall sidewalls, and you'll have to go in front of the planning commissioner and get this proved. Or if they want ten-foot walls, you can say, okay, here you go, sign them off, let them-
Yeah, so they have to, they have to submit, most people try to, it's an accessory permit, and you know, they're going to pull the permit, and it's going to have a basic fill-out, you know, the information. And I require some kind of images to see, you know, what are you proposing, you know, because sometimes people try to, you know, they want to propose something, and they explain it, but they explain it poorly on the phones, and now we try to require more images, like, please present an image of what you're proposing, to help succinctly describe the idea. And, yeah, we could, we could catch them and say, hey, no, you know, we've had plenty of those, you know, where most of the conditional use permits that were approved this year, people are like, I want to do this, and I'm like, not without planning commission approval, so we can catch these pretty easily.
Be something you just direct ask if it's oddball.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you have, you have to write those limitations in there.
Correct.
They just say, where does it say that?
You would have to adopt it, that's right.
Make it a hundred-foot tall.
Right, because if I was out of the office, or even, you know, if I was out of the office, and somebody else was interpreting the subdivision regulations, like Thatcher, for example, then, and he doesn't see, and it doesn't say anywhere in there that there's a height restriction on accessory units, then he's never going to force that issue. And it's, it's pretty easy to rebut that, yeah. So, you're right, you definitely would have to adopt that in the subdivision regulations if you wanted it to be enforceable.
I think that makes sense. In, inasmuch as if it's there, it's no big deal. If it's not there, it becomes a, an argument.
We can't, we can't ask them to present something that doesn't, that's not written down.
Right.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but they don't have it. It's like you need more work.
Is fifteen a reasonable, is that what you're thinking, would be a good starting point for consideration?
That's barely ten-foot walls. I mean, it depends on the pitch of your roof, most of them-
Fifteen-foot sidewalls, are you talking to the peak of the roof?
To the ridge. You have to, you have to get a limitation on the, the highest point of the-
Highest point, that's right.
It'd be ten-foot on your walls, and then it'd be tough, it'd be tight.
It'd be real tough, fifteen feet.
Most of the roofs around here are sixes, so what's that in the middle, five and?
How wide's your building?
If you're in a fourteen forty, you know.
If you're talking thirty-foot wide, fifteen, you're seven and a half feet.
Well, at least cover them, well, at least determine-
Plain, and you got thirty-foot walls, thirty-foot wide building, you're adding another seven and a half feet.
Twenty-foot would give you a ten-foot-
Seventeen and a half feet.
And fill the maximum square footage.
You want, yeah, you would try to make it so we don't have to review all of them, and it's like-
I don't think we're going to have to.
That's all, I think we get one every, I mean, that's all we do anymore.
Welcome to Kansas.
I'm like, well, you know, do we increase to a thousand square foot and then put a twenty-foot height? Does that make more sense than having this seven twenty, and it comes up every time somebody wants to build a? I'm like, you know.
I just work within the regulations. Somebody adopted them, I just interpreted them. Is twenty a good starting point?
I think so, yeah.
Your fourteen forty.
Okay. I'll get that drafted, and we'll get it published, and probably have to consider it in January.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if Mr. Ogle's, Mr. Verona wind up purchasing this building and lot, we can't say anything if they want to demolish it.
No.
And the only thing- And then Central County, now that they're C1, and that's what I was sort of getting to, but she was here. Yeah. You're going to have to have four off-site parking stalls per thousand square foot. So, I don't know what that building is, four thousand?
I'd have to look.
So, that's sixteen parking stalls off-site, or on-site, off-street parking per Central County. So, there's a parking lot.
And how many of those have to be?
You mean the church.
Andy Cap. I mean, there's, there's some real-
Since we're, since we're in an incorporated municipality, we have our own parking calculations, that would have to be-
Right, but as far as tearing the church down-
That's right, the last-
Something nice, but there are some safety issues they're going to have to overcome before they can even consider it.
That's right, that is-
Yeah, like asbestos. Plumbing issues and-
When they were doing that, something about then they have to bring the other building up to code, and so on and so forth, because they're-
Well, yeah, that annex.
You know, when you chose not to be here, I mean, we know this.
Annex will have to be brought up to code.
Oh, yeah.
Very much so. It's just not in as poor a condition as the churches. Annex came at a later date in life, and that church was built in nineteen ten.
It's probably not fifty years old, is it?
I don't know, I couldn't say. I just, the annex, which is right next to it, is much newer than the church is, and the church has got multiple issues, probably exceeding a hundred thousand dollars worth of code problems that they would need to fix before anybody could occupy it. Annex probably doesn't have nearly as much, so.
More comments?
Don't lie.
Nope.
No?
No.
Good?
No, sir.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor? I, I also agree.
Where's your gavel?
Oh, him and Josh.
Sir?